All right, good afternoon. Good afternoon, I am Warford Councilmember Janice Louis George, Chair of the Committee on Facilities and Family Services. It is 1:29 PM on Thursday, November 7, 2024. Today's hearing is on B250952, the Luggage for All Youth in Foster Care Amendment Act of 2024, also known as Lisa's Law. We are holding this hearing via full, fully virtual format with public and government witnesses testifying via Zoom. This hearing is also being broadcast live on my website at janicewarford.com/live. Here are some reminders about the committee's protocol for witnesses participating virtually. All witnesses participating in this Zoom webinar are currently listed as attendees. When it is your turn to join a panel for testimony, I will call your name and a member of my staff will promote you to be a panelist. If you wish to activate your video while you testify, you need to click the button in the toolbar at the bottom of your screen that looks like a video camera. Representatives of bona fide organizations will be given five minutes to testify. Unaffiliated public witnesses will be given three minutes. When your time is up, I ask that you please conclude your remarks so that we stay on schedule. Councilmembers present will have 10 minutes to ask each panel questions. If you have any technical issues during this hearing, please notify my staff either via the Q&amp;A function in Zoom or by sending an email to facilities@dc council.gov. All testimony that has been submitted is available now on the council's Hearing Management System. Witnesses are reminded to please submit a written copy of their testimony for the record by uploading your testimony to the Hearing Management System. The record for this hearing closes at 5:00 PM on Thursday, November 14. With that, I want to talk about the reason I introduced this legislation. I introduced the luggage for all youth in foster care amendment act of 2024, also known as Lisa's Law. It's simple, no youth entering in or leaving foster care should need to use trash bags when moving their personal belongings. Youth in foster care deserve dignity and respect. By protecting them from using trash bags when transporting their personal belongings, we aim to affirm their worth and offer them stability during such uncertain and traumatic transitions in the foster care system. The bill is named for and inspired by the advocacy of DC resident Lisa Cohen, who grew up in the foster care system and has dedicated her career to improving the outcomes of children in foster care. I am personally grateful to Lisa for her years of advocacy on behalf of youth in the care of the District of Columbia, particularly her work helping youth access quality and suitable luggage. I am proud Lisa Law has already gained the support of the majority of the council, and I'm grateful to councilmembers Nadeau, Henderson, Gray, Robert White, Trayon White, Parker, Bonds, and Pinto for introducing this bill with me. Before we get to our public and government witnesses, I want to review what the bill does. I'll note the committee and CFSA have already agreed to a few changes from the introduced version to clarify the bill's requirements and strengthen its ability to achieve our shared goals. First, Lisa Law requires CFSA to provide new or slightly used luggage to youth who are entering foster care, moving from one foster care placement to another, starting higher education or military service, or exiting foster care. The bill defines slightly used to ensure youth previously receive to ensure youth receive only high-quality and functioning luggage, even if it was previously used. Second, the bill requires CFSA to establish and maintain a supply of luggage and develop procedures for the inspection, storage, and distribution of luggage. CFSA already has these practices in place, so this bill aims to make access to luggage easier for youth, CFSA employees, and community partners to ensure luggage will be used regardless of when or where it is needed. Third, Lisa Law established provided luggage will be the property of the youth and cannot be taken by CFSA or individuals with whom the youth is living. This provision guarantees no matter the circumstances, youth in care will always have something that truly belongs to them and only them. A fourth, the bill requires CFSA to consult with youth on their selection of the luggage. This requirement applies to non-emerging, non-emergency moves, so luggage selection is never a delay or barrier to youth moving. Factors to be considered during selection of luggage in CFSA's supply include the youth age, the youth's mobility, the number, size, and weight of personal belongings to be transported, and when the youth is three years old or older, the youth's personal preferences. Because luggage will belong to youth, they should get a say in what they need and want. Lastly, Lisa Law codifies CFSA's authority to solicit and accept gifts of new and slightly used luggage, and also requires CFSA to submit an annual report that documents when CFSA provides luggage to youth, each instance, disposal bags were used to transport personal belongings, and the reason why, and an update on CFSA's luggage supply and procedures. I want to say I greatly appreciate CFSA's collaboration on and support of this bill, and I'm confident our partnership during implementation of Lisa's Law will have a profound impact on all youth in the foster care system. At this time, I unfortunately need to step away. I want to thank CFSA and our public witnesses for your participation, and I'm going to designate my ward one colleague, Councilmember Nadeau, as chair of this hearing, and I want to thank Councilwoman Nadeau for stepping in for this hearing. So I will now turn it over to Councilmember Nadeau.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to work together today on an issue that's very dear to my heart, and thank you for continuing to move the agenda of the committee forward, even though you are also juggling a lot of new family responsibilities. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next time, we would like a baby cameo, I'm just putting it out there, okay?
I will, if he wasn't asleep, you would have gotten that kid. I can't sit at the moment.
Okay, yeah, don't do that, go get some rest, thank you so much. I'm thrilled to be able to help today. So, Councilmember Louis George really said it all. I'm not going to add anything to opening remarks, but I am going to call up our public witnesses. We have one panel today that involves the namesake Lisa Cohen, also May Yoneyama O'Brien, Kelsey Nelson, and Tammy Wera Singa Kote, the Policy Director of DC Children's Law Center. And that is all of the witnesses that we have for today. So before we start with them, I will just say if there are any attendees in the Zoom who did not sign up to testify but wish to do so, if you could raise your hand, use the raise hand function. We'll have the committee staff elevate you to the panel now so that you can testify after those who have signed up. But otherwise, our first witness today will hear from Ms. Cohen when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, would you like to turn your camera on?
I would, let me see if I can.
Should be right next to the button you pushed to unmute yourself. Says video.
Okay, I'm on my phone, I'm not used to using this.
Oh, yeah, it's a little harder on your phone, there you go, you got it.
All right, hi, hi, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, thank you, Janice Louis, Councilmember George, and Branda Nadeau, thank you so much. Okay, so I have written something, so I'm going to read it. Okay, so my name is Lisa Cohen, and I stand here today before you as a former foster child, as an advocate for foster youth, and as the immediate past president of the Rotary Club of Washington DC. I want to express my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you, especially Councilmember George, for your support of the Foster Care Luggage Bill, also known as Lisa's Law, thank you. Today is a pivotal moment for the children of our city. This legislation is not about, not just about luggage, it's about dignity. It's about ensuring that every foster child, whether they are still in the system or aging out, has the means to carry their belongings in a way that respects their worth as individuals. Reflecting on my own journey through 13 different placements, I can only remember one occasion when I had a proper bag to carry, and it was a nylon bag accompanied by garbage bags that held everything that I owned. Too often, me and my siblings would learn at the last minute that we were moving. We returned from school to find our belongings hastily shoved into trash bags left on the porch. The message was clear, we mattered little and our things mattered even less. For my siblings and me, being told that we would never find a place better than the one we were leaving only deepened the insecurities we carried. Out of the five ponder siblings, only two of us have managed to steer clear of drug addiction and/or prison. Our experiences shape our reality, and the way we move through life often painted a picture of our struggles and despair. When youth transition from one home to another, moving with garbage bags, it sends a message that they are disposable. And once they age out of the system, those garbage bags often turn into shopping carts and/or a life of hardship. This is why I made it my mission during my Rotary Club presidency to bring awareness to this issue and to create a platform for change. I want to thank the Rotary Club members for standing by my side in this effort. It was because of all of you that we were awarded the Rotary Club of the Year this year in our district out of 67 clubs during my presidency. But this recognition pales in comparison to the impact that this law is going to have on our foster youth. Thank you, councilmembers, for understanding the importance of providing foster youth and homeless children with luggage as a means to carry their belongings with pride. With pride, let's give these children the dignity they deserve and help them move forward in their lives, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen, for your testimony. Now we'll hear from Ms. O'Brien.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is May Yoneyama O'Brien, and I am a secretary and board member of the Rotary Club of Washington DC. And our club is the oldest and largest Rotary Club in Washington, founded in 1912, and our motto is "Service Above Self." Today, I'm testifying in support of Lisa's Law. First, I'd like to thank the Facilities and Family Services Committee Chairwoman Janice Louis George for championing Lisa's Law, the Luggage for All Youth and Foster Care Amendment Act of 2024, as well as all the councilmembers who supported it. During Lisa P. Cohen's year as president of the Washington DC Rotary Club in 2023-24, just last year, our club went all out to support her presidential signature project, which is Rotary's championship fight for youth to bring attention to the plight of foster children in the DMV area, particularly those foster youth aging out of this system. Besides inviting numerous weekly speakers to address our club about children at risk, especially foster children in DC, including the DC Attorney General and the Chief of Police, the club chose a fundraising project, dear to the horror of our president, the Move with Dignity luggage project, to provide new luggage to foster children. Foster children are the most vulnerable and least represented class of children in the DMV. Many are subject to multiple moves to multiple foster homes. Many have only 10 minutes to stuff all their belongings in a trash bag before being taken away to a new location. This is a story familiar to our president, who grew up in the foster care system in Washington DC, starting with being placed at Junior Village, I should say the infamous Junior Village, and being moved to new foster homes in DC 13 times. 13 times. She was demeaned and humiliated by other kids when she showed up at a new home with all her belongings stuffed in garbage bags. The constant moving, the stress of emotional, verbal, and physical abuse leave scars that are enduring and take a toll on a child's self-image. But somehow, our Lisa had grit and gumption and empowered herself by declaring, "I am not that trash bag." President Lisa's Move with Dignity project was an all-club effort with the Rotary Foundation of DC donating $5,000, which was matched with another $5,000 by Rotary District 7620. Those are clubs in DC and Southern Maryland, which allowed us to purchase 100 brand-new suitcases at a discount offered by the Samsonite Company and then distribute them to local foster care charities and NGOs. Like many in my club, I knew nothing about the plight of foster children, the complex multi-agency managed DC foster care system, or even the origins of the child welfare system, until I heard Lisa's fraught but incredible story, which she told in her book, Being Too Fierce, one woman's incredible journey from foster child to world championship boxing. However, one thing became clear to us through Lisa's advocacy, and that is the safety net for foster children in DC is broken. In DC, 16.8% of children under 18 lived below the poverty line, according to the Annie Casey Foundation. In the US, there are almost, there are over 991,000 children in foster care. About a third of these children have moved and placed in new foster homes two or three times a year. These uprooting placements are emotionally disruptive and traumatizing, gathering their belongings and stuffing them in trash bags even more so. There are about 3,000 children and youth in foster care in the DMV. Foster care is usually a temporary living situation where parents are unable to care for them. The child welfare system is designed to protect children from neglect, trauma, abuse, mistreatment, and to keep children safe and provide foster care in homes where needed. The goal is to safely reunite children with their parents or secure another permanent family. This is not always possible in DC. In 2002, the number of children in DC who were confirmed by Child Protective Services victims of malt treatment was 1,574 out of 8,412 children investigating alleging malt treatment, with three child fatalities and 498 placed in foster care, according to the Annie Casey Foundation. Youth aging out of foster care are particularly vulnerable when they have to transition to adulthood on their own and face the realities of taking care of themselves, particularly if they don't have support of relatives or a strong foster family. Almost 20% become homeless. Many suffer from PTSD. The services provided by the foster care system are not always available to them. Foster youth cohort, can I keep going?
Well, you know, Ms. May, I was going to ask if you could summarize, because we do have your written testimony to include in the record, but you've exceeded your time for oral testimony. So if there's anything you want to say in closing?
Okay, I just want to say that President Biden did support foster children during Foster Care Month, and he said our nation has a moral responsibility to ensure all our foster children are taken care of, especially foster children. And I just want to end by saying I hope the whole DC council can find it in their hearts to support enactment and funding of Lisa's Law and to offer a modicum of dignity to those vulnerable children and youth. A suitcase for every foster child who needs one is the least we can do to bring hope in their lives. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Now, the next witness we have scheduled is Kelsey Nelson, but we have not seen her appear in the Zoom listed under that name. So Kelsey, if you are here under another name, if you could make yourself known, we'll be happy to promote you. But otherwise, we'll move on to Ms. Wera Singa Kote.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Nadeau. My name is Tammy Wera Singa Kote, and I am the Policy Director of the Children's Law Center. I'm also a Warford resident and a parent of three children here in the district. Children's Law Center believes that every child should grow up with a strong foundation of family, health, and education, and live in a world free from poverty, trauma, racism, and other forms of oppression. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding B250952, the Luggage for All Youth and Foster Care Amendment Act of 2024. Children's Law Center attorneys serve as guardians ad litem for children in the care and custody of CFSA, and currently, we represent approximately half the children involved with CFSA, which is about several hundred children in foster care and protective supervision each year. Children's Law Center supports this legislation and its efforts to ensure that children in foster care are provided with good quality luggage to transport their belongings when they move from one home to another. Moving from place to place is one of the hardest and most painful parts of foster care. Having to stuff your belongings into trash bags to carry them to a new home makes that moment and that first impression harder and more humiliating. Ensuring children in care have the proper means to transport their belongings during placement changes is one small way the agency can support the child during this challenging and painful time. We recognize that the agency already has policies and practices in place to support this goal, and we appreciate the committee's efforts through this legislation to support and strengthen these practices. With this goal in mind, we asked the committee and the agency to consider simplifying rules and procedures and removing restrictions related to the provision of luggage to children in care from both the proposed legislation and current agency practices. In our experience, removals and placement changes can often be unexpected or fast-moving in ways that may make the logistics of supplying luggage to children in care challenging, particularly if there are numerous requirements around how and where luggage is stored, as well as obligations to meticulously track and report on the use of luggage. To the extent the committee and the agency can remove such requirements from law and practice and allow for more flexibility in the handling and storing of luggage, we believe children in care will be more easily able to access luggage during placement changes. For example, we would like to see social workers be able to keep extra luggage in their cars or homes or other locations more convenient to them so that if they have to pick up a child unexpectedly, the luggage is already on hand. Further, we ask the committee and the agency to ensure that this legislation does not add to the already heavy workloads of agency social workers. Eliminating unnecessary procedures and restrictions from existing agency practices related to providing luggage to children in care would help ensure that this legislation does not increase burdens on social workers. We also ask this committee to consider eliminating the reporting requirement entirely from the proposed legislation and instead replace it with a regular oversight question regarding the number of instances during the reporting period of disposable bags being used to transport the belongings of children in care and the reasons for each instance. Finally, we would like to draw the committee and agency's attention to several other logistical challenges associated with children in foster care moving from home to home. Even if the children in care have luggage for transporting their belongings, the homes they are moving to often lack storage space. Our clients sometimes don't have access to drawers or cabinets and are therefore unable to unpack, contributing to a feeling of displacement and lack of belonging. The homes our clients are placed in also sometimes lack the capacity to store larger items, such as luggage or personal belongings that aren't for daily use or don't fit into the child's allotted space in the home. As far as we can tell, the agency is not always able to store the additional personal belongings of children in care in one place that is easily accessible to foster children so they can retrieve their belongings when they want them. Although these challenges do not have quick or obvious solutions, we would appreciate the committee and the agency considering how best to address these needs as part of their efforts to ensure that children in care are treated with dignity and respect during placement changes. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. It turns out that Kelsey Nelson arrived to testify in person in room 120. So we are getting that set up in the room so that the cameras can be on and fed into the Zoom. And in the meantime, we'll turn to Stephanie Perry for testimony. And Kenneth Barnes, we would like to promote you to the panel, but you have to accept the invitation. So we're going to send you another invite now, and you just have to click to join the panel. Go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Okay, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, would you like to turn on your camera so we can see you?
Hey, I'm trying to do that. I suffer from technology, and it's a challenge.
You've mastered it now, so you're all set to give your testimony when you're ready.
Great, good afternoon, everyone, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to testify on the Lisa Law luggage for foster care children. I am a retired DC government worker. I spent over 30 years with the Office of the Attorney General Child Support Services Division. And before that, I started as a social service assistant while I was in college, working with Child and Family Services in the intake unit. And the unit where I worked, we were responsible for removing children and transporting them to their foster homes. And it was very heart-wrenching to see these children carry their lives after being removed from an abusive situation. And to have to carry their lives in these plastic bags was very demeaning. And I saw it on their faces, I felt it in my heart. And it's been over 30 years since I've worked in that area, and I am just so proud of Ms. Cohen to be able to introduce this bill. And I pray that the council gives it a total thumbs up, approval, to make this act be a law, to help these children be able to feel some pride in their lives after going through such a traumatic event, because unfortunately, we just look at the outside of what needs to be handled, but we don't think about what's going on inside the heads and inside the hearts. So thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak, and I just look forward to hearing that the day will be coming soon when this bill will be acted on. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now hear from Mr. Kenneth Barnes. Mr. Barnes, you'll need to unmute yourself, there you go, and then if you wish, you can turn on your camera.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Councilmember Nadeau, any other committee members present, I'm blind, so I cannot see. I am here on behalf of Lisa's Law and to testify on behalf of Lisa Cohen and the law submitted before the council. I'm also a member of the Rotary Club. I have been a member of the Rotary Club for 19 years. I also serve as a chair for the DC Peace Initiative, really in our Rotary Club, to work side by side with Lisa's Committee for the Luggage Bill. I've known Lisa for several years, and I know the pain and agony that she went through as a foster care child. I know this was a dream of hers, to be able to come and put forth something, a initiative like this, because I know it's occasions, I haven't heard how she didn't have luggage, and she never had a birthday. That's another thing that we didn't mention yet, was our Rotary Club, I swear, our birthday party for foster care children this year, and for 2% of the luggage. As someone who's worked within the community... As someone who's worked within the community and then worked with violence and gun violence, it's far too often, we run across children who don't have parents, who are come from the foster care system that don't get the same break as a lot of other children do. So in my speaking on behalf of Lisa Cohen, I am so proud that she's able to present this bill before the city council. And I hope the city council approves it unanimously. And thank you very much, Councilmember Nadeau, for accepting my testimony.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And we are now ready to turn to our in-person witness. Perfect timing. Kelsey Nelson, I believe the camera will turn to you now. Great. So when you're ready, push that button right there. When the red light is on, we'll be able to hear you.
Awesome. Sorry about that technology. Well, thank you so much again for the opportunity to speak today about something very important and near and dear to my heart. It is great to be in community with so many advocates who truly care about the future of this city and our young people who are at the heart of that. I think with the most recent presidential election that just happened, why there are so many emotions and why so many people care is the well-being of our young people. So just to give a little bit of background about why I'm here today, my name is Kelsey Nicole Nelson. I most recently served as the Director of Communications for the National Foster Youth Institute, which is a nonprofit representing transitioned age foster youth from the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. And today I serve as the Director of Communications for Mentor, which is a national nonprofit organization focused on the quality and quantity of mentoring relationships. And actually, in January, getting ready for National Mentoring Month, but also just here as a DC resident and as a sports journalist. And in each one of my roles, I've had the opportunity to work up close in person with foster youth. That's actually how I was first introduced to Ms. Lisa Cohen, a wonderful, bright, amazing individual who truly does care about the future of this city. And when I met Lisa, just hearing her story as a championship boxer, who overcome much adversity here in Washington DC as a foster youth, it was immediately, it was immediate and instant that we became connected. And we immediately championed many of the same causes. When Lisa told me that I would have an opportunity to testify today for this very important law, Lisa's Law, it connected with me as someone, you know, who grew up in the Boys and Girls Club and was friends with me foster youth, had foster youth in my family, that sense of belonging immediately that comes from a child, a young person, having something that's theirs and having something that can't be taken away and having decency and dignity when they have to move from home to home, which is a very traumatic experience in a young person's life. And it is something that unfortunately that far too many young people have to go through again and again and again. So the opportunity, I think, that the DC council has here today, and we as citizens, we as human beings who care about each other and the growth of our village, I think, is very opportunistic. And I think we can think about how much this is going to help every young person that has been impacted by foster youth here in Washington DC. We know nationwide, there's over four hundred thousand foster youth, and here in DC, that number continues to grow. And any chance that we have, I know there's so many people talking about what can we do to help young people? Well, here's one of the actionable steps that we can do to help young people. This goes so much more beyond us talking, so much more beyond us yelling. This is actually something that says, hey, we care. And piece of luggage also says that we see you, we hear you. And again, you belong here in this Washington DC community. So I think any chance that the DC council has to give something that might seem small to us, but something that's big to a child, to a young person, and again, I'm speaking here from the heart and from somebody who has many mentees that are in the system, but see each day as an opportunity to thrive and grow here in the nation's capital, I think we need to advance it. So I proudly support this opportunity, and I hope you all join us. Thank you, councilmember. And thank you all who helped to put this on for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of young people who simply want a chance at access and opportunity and to belong.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and thanks to all of our witnesses today for coming out. I want to start with some questions from Ms. Cohen. As you know, luggage is important for the logistics of transporting of personal belongings, but more importantly, is protecting the dignity and the autonomy of youth. And that was a theme that came up pretty consistently from our witnesses today. Can you talk more about that second part, that dignity and autonomy, autonomy and why even one youth forced to use a trash bag is too many?
Yes, I can. Well, as you all know by now, I grew up in the foster care system. And my lived experience, I talk about, I talk a lot when I speak publicly about this issue, just in foster care in general, that many times when we are little, as a little kid, you're just more concerned about where you're going versus what's in the bag beside you. But as you get older, and you think about it when you're a kid, but you're not as aware because you're so optimistic. But as you go through your journey in foster care, I would say up to age ten or eleven, you start to see how people look at you when you show up to their homes with trash bags, garbage bags full. You go up to wherever you're going to be sleeping, and you go through your things. And I particularly remember one instance where my things were all tossed into a bag. And I remember like some talcum powder, like my toiletries and all of that in the same bag. And we have very little to start with, but I remember having this special pair of suede shoes. And this talcum powder was embedded in these suede shoes that I could never, and I loved those shoes, and I could never wear them again because of that. That made me angry, and that was probably the first time that I started to really hate the situation of having to throw all of my things in, or them having thrown all of my things in bags. Because like I said, I came home from school to see all of my things on the porch or, you know, in these situations. And, you know, many people think that the reason why foster kids move is because, oh, they must be bad kids. They must be, you know, a problem. I didn't have those problems. I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't that kid. But I had to move often just simply because the foster parents get worn out. The social workers switch as many times as the garbage bags do. So that's, yeah, that's what I can speak on that. And it's horrible. Imagine how easily a trash bag can be punctured. We were helping this year, I mean, my Rotary year, with this Moving Day Mafia, which is an organization that helps college students in foster care move into their college dorms. And on this particular day, I wasn't able to make it to Morgan State. But one of my colleagues, and she's on here now, Rosalyn Overstreet, she called me, and she was heartbroken to see that a young person had flown all the way from California to Morgan State University, and they had garbage bags, and they were coming out of foster care. And the truth is, they couldn't even, the social worker had to put them into duffel bags and then give the garbage bags out of that. Because how do you check in garbage bags on a plane?
Right, right. Wow.
That's the impact.
That's huge. Yeah. And, you know, it's, it's something that we've been talking about here at the council for a while. I mean, this came up when I chaired the Committee on Human Services too. And I'm just really glad that, you know, with the support of the Rotary Club, you were able to get this bill introduced. I think it's really powerful to see a community, especially a community, you know, in the business world, come together and do this. I love it. So thank you for that. I want to ask you, Ms. O'Brien. I was wondering if you believe there's an opportunity for your existing partnership to expand to include CFSA so the luggage that you all generously provide gets to youth in the district's care through the soon-to-be robust process established in Lisa's Law?
We do have a committee called Championship Fight for Youth, which will carry on the program of addressing issues involving foster youth, especially the luggage issue, which we hope to continue, you know, carrying on. Our president, Bob Schott, this year, has agreed to carry this mission on. Next year, our president-elect, Donnie Shaw, who used to be with the YMCA, has also agreed to carry on Lisa's mission. And, you know, if there's any way we can support carrying, you know, providing luggage every year, working with DC government. I'm not sure how that works, but we're happy to work with them and, you know, provide, be a conduit for more luggage children.
That's wonderful. And I know that the interim director of the agency is here today, listening in and will be providing testimony later. So, you know, it's an easy connection for us to make here at the council. So thank you so much for that. Ms. Nelson, I was wondering, given your familiarity with foster care nationally, if you could provide any insights on how other jurisdictions manage luggage and how DC compares?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, it switches all over like you are kind of alluding to, especially in cities. So right now, my previous organization did a lot of work in Los Angeles. Los Angeles is very unique. It's kind of like DC, homelessness is a big issue, substance abuse as well. And one of the things unfortunately that we saw with young people moving in California was actually other people inside the house placing things in the luggage bags of substance abuse that was not the children's, and essentially getting these young people caught up in the juvenile justice system, which I'm sure was probably talked about as well on this call. So all that to say, I think this is something that's being talked about a lot. We're having a lot of community. The good thing is that a lot of different jurisdictions have been reaching out to try to handle this issue in the best way. And kind of like we're saying on this call, groups like the Rotary Club, lots of nonprofit groups as well, and cities across the country are trying to also join in. So right now, we are seeing governments kind of leave it in the hands of nonprofit groups. But I do think they're trying to take more agency and authority on it. I think why this is so unique is because DC, as the nation's capital, can actually help to lead the ways. I just think about the impact that I could use nationally as a communications person to show if DC can do it. You know, as a city, I believe of seven hundred thousand residents, I think, I'll check, or it might be more. It seems like people are moving here each and every day, how that could be an inspiration. And DC can really be a role model and a leader in the right way, I think, for cities and municipalities to act. And so I think what we do here today is going to be watched by a lot. There's a lot of questions before I came to this call for that exact reason. And I'm excited to hopefully have good news to share later on, once, of course, the council makes the final decision.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wera Singa Koté, you mentioned, in addition to luggage for transporting belongings, youth need places to store their belongings. Do you know who's supposed to be responsible for providing storage items to youth in care? Is it CFSA foster parents or the provider of the placement location?
I think it's a mix. Like, I know CFSA has partnerships and programs to help placements or foster homes where they may be lacking in certain items to procure them. But, you know, DC has a placement crisis. There are not always homes available for everybody who needs one. And so, I mean, we just find that a lot of times that our clients end up in places where there just isn't any place for them to keep their things. And so that, there are lots of varied, I think, various situations, specific reasons why that may be. And, you know, like I said, there are nonprofits, there are partners that are, you know, that can provide furniture. And I do think the agency could probably speak more to like how those relationships work or how often kids are in a place before those things are provided. But we have just noted that that seems to be more of an issue for our clients than luggage itself.
That's important to understand. Thank you. And can you talk more about what else is going on at the pickup process that requires further evaluation? And what can CFSA do to make transportation of youth safer and easier for both youth and social workers?
Again, I think a lot of times, this is a little bit situation-specific. It's not necessarily a, but what I will say is, again, because, because the population of, especially maybe older youth that we see in care right now can sometimes need more supports or need more behavioral health supports or need homes that are able to support them in ways that are, that can be demanding, we do see more unexpected, you know, placement disruption, not planned moves, but things that are unexpected or sort of fast-moving. Removals can also be sort of fast-moving. And so I think when we were sort of looking at, trying to understand when this luggage issue can come up or what can be driving the luggage issue beyond just having luggage, because it's our understanding that it may not necessarily always be about having physical luggage in the possession of the agency, but more the logistics of like if someone's placement disrupts close to Baltimore, and the social worker is a Maryland social worker, are they able to get to where the luggage is kept, pick it up, get out to that home? Like, probably not. So we're just trying to note that, like, some of this may not, may be about just having more flexibility in how people access the luggage so that kids can have the luggage and have access to the luggage sort of in a variety of circumstances. And then again, our youth, as you know, councilmember, are not, they're kind of, they're spread out. There's some in Maryland, there's some out in the eastern shore. And so I think all of that adds to the challenge of making sure that they have the luggage and they have what they need during a placement disruption or a placement move.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And thank you also to Ms. Perry and Mr. Barnes for jumping in and providing additional testimony. I don't have any additional questions for this panel. I just want to thank you all for participating in today's legislative hearing.
Thank you.
So we're gonna now turn to our government witnesses. Joining us today is Tanya Torres-Trice, interim director of the Child and Family Services Agency. Thank you, Director, for being here today. Before you begin, I'm gonna administer an oath to you. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give to the Committee on Facilities and Family Services is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmember Louis George, and congratulations, and Councilmember Nadeau, members of the committee and committee staff. My name is Tanya Torres-Trice, and I'm the interim director of the DC Child and Family Services Agency, proud social worker and Ward Five resident. I'm here today to testify in support of Bill two-five dash zero nine five two, the Luggage for All Youth and Foster Care Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, also known as Lisa's Law. I also want to personally thank Ms. Cohen for sharing her lived experience in advocating for this law. Children and families who interact with the child welfare system often find themselves in dire situations with little certainty or comfort in times of crisis. It is essential for children to feel supported during the significant life changes they encounter in these situations. Lisa's Law creates an opportunity to support the general wellness and mental well-being of children and families by providing functional and presentable new and lightly-used bags for transporting their belongings. This is a good thing, it's a practical thing, in a small way to ensure that we care for the dignity and self-esteem of children in crisis. I'm happy today to testify that CFSA is a leader in this area and already has systems in place to support children and youth in this manner. I appreciate the opportunity to express my full support for the proposed legislation and my excitement at the potential donation opportunities that will hopefully flow from the passage and publication. CFSA is looked at as a leader in many areas of child welfare policy and practice, and this topic is no different. CFSA currently offers new and lightly-used luggage to children and families in care through Partners for Kids and Families, otherwise known as PKF, the donation of our agency. I'm proud to say that PKF has increased its incoming donations by eighty percent under my leadership. This allows us to provide children and families with numerous essential needs at any point during a child's involvement with CFSA. Currently, PKF's donation center is stocked with a robust inventory of new and lately-used luggage and bags, thanks to the generosity of DC residents and local charitable organizations. We maintain a total inventory as of today of over six hundred and thirty new and lately-used suitcases, backpacks, and duffels across three locations, ensuring that children and families have access to a variety of bags and suitcases as needed while gathering and transporting their essential and personal items. The passage of Lisa's Law will codify this important offering and hopefully spur awareness and donation so that CFSA can continue to provide this service to our community. CFSA is already prepared to implement Lisa's Law as we currently have a process for ensuring quality of donated items, storing them, and distributing them as appropriate. Lisa's Law would present further opportunities to formalize our processes and train staff and members of the children's team regarding the retention, storage, and distribution of luggage and bags. so you, so CFSA can continue the commitment to upholding and respecting the dignity of children in our care. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. More importantly, thank you for recognizing and supporting the efforts we make every day to ease the lives of children and families who interact with the child welfare system. I'm joined today by Alicia Graves, who manages our Partners for Kids and Families, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Director. And I want to personally thank you for your partnership and support of this important bill. I used to chair the Committee on Human Services when CFSA was a part of the committee, and I'm currently a member of this committee. And so, I think the way in which the committee and the agency work together on this is a testament to how both branches of government can work together to serve DC residents. So, thank you for that. We've heard about instances in which trash bags have been used, but I'm not sure we have a clear picture about how common it is. I'd like to start by getting your reaction to the public testimonies we heard earlier about what it's like for youth in care to be forced to use trash bags when moving their belongings.
Thank you for your question. Despicable. I do not believe that any youth at any time should be moving in trash bags. It says and sends a message that they are trash, and we do not align with that. We do not believe in that. I, my personal side of response to that question is my mother was in foster care, and I always keep that in the back of my head. And at no time is there a reason for our children to move in any trash bags. Again, our donations have increased eighty percent in luggage is one of the areas that it has increased significantly due to the advocacy of Ms. Cohen. I think that even from Maryland, we're seeing increased donations. And so, my initial response is, it's not acceptable.
And does CFSA track how often trash bags are used?
We don't specifically track that. I do track, though, how many suitcases and luggages have been checked out over the last couple of fiscal years. But I can say that I previously led the older youth side of the House and older youth empowerment. And anytime I saw a trash bag, it was immediate stepping, like, this can't happen. This is not right, and we need to correct it now. So, we don't track trash bag usage, but what we do have is three locations that do have luggage available to our staff. One of the locations is here at our headquarters, is twenty-four hours a day. Also, short staff and support staff have access to it at any time. But I also do recognize that it's not always feasible to go to the center to stop a separation and go pick up luggage. So, we are in early talks about just putting a piece of luggage in the cars. We have about eighty cars, and we can put a piece of luggage in each of the cars, so that we can avoid anybody being transported in trash bags.
Great. That's some good creative thinking. I love to hear it. During public testimony, we heard concerns about the bill's reporting requirements being too burdensome for agency and social workers. We've removed some of the reporting obligations in the revised draft. The report essentially requires CFSA to track annually the number of times luggage was provided, the number of times disposable bags were used, and the reason, and the agency's current luggage supply and procedures, including any changes from the previous year. With that in mind, I have a two-part question. First, how burdensome would this report be for the agency, and more importantly, for social workers?
So, I would start by saying, the only burdensome part that I see currently would be the disposable bags. We're not made aware of that, and when we are, we do supply luggage. And so, I don't know that I would be able to adequately give you that number. But as far as the burdensome, the burden on the social workers, that's never my intent to overburden them. I'm a social worker first, and so, I do keep that in mind. And so, I do can tell you today how many times somebody checked out luggage or came to get luggage from our location. So, we already have the tracking mechanisms in place for everything but the trash bags, because again, that is something that we do not believe in. It should not be happening when it does, and I need to be made aware, so we can quickly get the young people a bag.
Would it be easier if CFSA was required to track usage of luggage and disposable bags on its own without another statutory report?
Again, this is something that we currently track. So, I think that is going to cause any additional strain on our system. Alicia Graves here has done a wonderful job in her role as the program manager over Partners for Kids and Families, and can probably tell you how many carts we have in inventory right now. So, I don't think it will add an additional layer for our social workers as much as it would just formalize the tracking that's already happening through Alicia and team.
Great. Okay. So, just to get into some of the logistics here, let's walk through each step that would be affected by the bill. So, starting at the beginning with securing luggage, how can you, can you describe how CFSA currently solicits for luggage?
Sure. So, we solicit through our Partners for Kids and Family, which is a donation arm of the agency. We have both a website. Alicia is in the community. We have so much luggage, in fact, that we donate to other organizations, because we can't, we don't have storage for it all. So, we solicit by word of mouth and through our website, we have campaigns that focus on luggage. We have donors who continue to resurface and give us luggage. We partner with organizations across the nation for care packages for children, which include both kids going away to college, but also kids coming into the foster care system, which include things like pajamas and socks and underwear, things that are essential for right now. So, the donations really, they really pour in. They really pour in specifically luggage, again, so much so that we have had to give to the community, which we love doing also.
Wonderful. And from whom does CFSA primarily receive the luggage?
Yeah, sixty-two percent of our donations through luggage is through DC residents. So, majority of them are through residents who are looking to donate gently-used suitcases, because they just don't have the money to store it, and they can't fathom throwing it away. And they really take pride in donating and being a part of the community in which they live. The other forty percent come from local nonprofits, businesses within the community, and most of those are new pieces of luggage.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. And one of the changes from the introduced version is we are allowing the use of slightly-used luggage, not just new luggage. So, I want to assure everyone that just because we're no longer requiring all luggage to be brand-new, all luggage given to youth will still be high-quality and fully-functional. With that said, can you describe the inspection process for donated luggage?
I can, and thank you for that question. I can confirm, we would not send or accept anything in here, that we would not carry ourselves, that we would not use ourselves. And so, the inspection process, the sitting to my right is Alicia Graves, and she personally inspects every single thing that comes in through our door, that it is practical, that it is not dirty, that it does not look used. We turn away a lot of items, actually, through our donation because we want our youth to not feel like garbage, to not feel like second-hand. But also to recognize that if we turned away lightly-used and good-quality luggage, that we would be doing ourselves a disservice. So, the inspection does happen through Ms. Alicia Graves in her continuous quality check of all donated items that come into Partners for Kids and Families.
You have any specific criteria you use to determine what's acceptable and what's what to turn away?
Yeah, I mean, to make very fair, we really prioritize dignity when we're accepting this luggage, being one to ensure that all donated luggage is in good quality condition. We check for, the zippers are working properly, the wheels are in working condition. There's no holes, or it looks too dirty, that our young people are not going to take pride in the carrying. So, we really make sure those quality standards are in place. And we really inspect for usability, to make sure it can be transported back forth, even if it has to fly across the country, to California to go to college. So, we really make sure we inspect it. And if it doesn't meet our standards, just like Director said, we will donate it to a community partner and just knock it away.
That's perfect. So, the most recent version of the bill now defines the term "slightly-used" to mean in a state of condition that indicates only light usage, does not have any major physical alterations such as dents, scrapes, rips, and patches, and is not damaged in any manner that inhibits proper functionality. Do you believe that CFSA is able to maintain an adequate supply of luggage with this definition?
Yes, I do.
Great. Let's turn to discuss the supply and storage. So, you described what sounds like quite a surplus of luggage. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the majority of the current luggage supply is slightly-used?
So, the current breakdown is we have seventy-four suitcases, one hundred ninety-one double bags, three hundred and twenty-three backpacks, and forty-eight Karen bags. The breakdown of those are, of that six hundred and thirty-six, five hundred and thirty-five of those pieces are new.
Okay. How many locations is it stored, and where are those locations? You started talking about this earlier.
Yes, we have three locations. So, we have here at our main headquarters, two hundred I Street, which I would love anyone to come and tour and see our Partners for Kids facility where.
It's really cool.
It's really fun, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And and just so you know, side note, while the Rotary team would testify, we gotta, we gotta talk to them and invite them in and hopefully start a new partnership, because I commend their work as well and their willingness to to champion this law. But that's our first location. Our second location is at our older youth empowerment building, which is in northeast. And then our third location is in the courthouse at our mayor services liaison office. So, we wanted to, we started just with our one headquarters location, but quickly realized that if you're at OIE, it is going to be troublesome for you to get down here, get luggage, and and keep it moving along, so you're not causing further trauma to the children. So, we do have three locations currently where these items are accessible.
Do you believe it's that your, the agency is able to maintain adequate supply of luggage with these, with the limitations on used luggage that we've discussed?
Yes, I do.
Do you purchase luggage at all?
We do not purchase luggage. We have not had to purchase luggage.
And how is it currently distributed?
Sure. So, distribution happens by way of connecting with Partners for Kids and Families and/or going into the center themselves and picking up the luggage. So, it's funny, because I'm looking to my left, there's actually overflow of storage right next to me of luggage that Alicia monitors our main donation center on a regular basis and then keeps it stocked. So, current distribution looks like either connecting with Partners for Kids and Family member, or using their badge themselves to go in and get the luggage.
The Office of Revenue Analysis told the committee that CFSA's estimated cost to implement the legislation would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Do you know if that estimate was based on the original introduced version that required only new luggage?
Yes, that was based on requiring only new luggage and the fiscal impact, if we had to build that in.
Okay, great. So, I just wanted to make sure, because allowing for slightly-used luggage was to prevent CFSA from needing to buy all-new luggage. I wasn't sure where that cost came from. So, we'll work with you on that. Okay. Um, during public testimony, we heard concerns about CFSA itself not being able to store youth's personal items when needed due to a lack of storage capacity. Can you describe how and where youth and attorneys can request items to be stored and retrieved?
Yes, and that's a great question. Currently, I agree with all of the testimony. The youth's belongings are all they have, and so, it is our obligation to protect those belongings. And so, currently, we do have storage capacity, though limited, at both our Office of Youth and Power, older youth empowerment, excuse me, and then here at our headquarters location. Of course, it is limited, and so, at times, we have also had to run storage facilities. It is never our intention to separate the young people from their belongings. And it is a case-by-case basis. Sometimes, you know, they leave their their clothes and want to come back and get through it all the time. And so, we also think about the accessibility of their belongings, because if we're storing them, we also want to make sure that they can have access to them when they need their belongings. So, currently, storage does look a little different depending on the situation. But it is mainly within our government buildings where it can be safe and secure.
Are there additional things you think the agency can improve with respect to storage?
Yes, I think there are areas for improvement. I think that we should carve out storage space in our building, because what we are also finding, one of the witnesses did testify to, you know, having to move several times. That's never what we want to see, the one that does happen. Again, I want to be sure that we are doing everything we can to protect the belongings of our youth. And so, older youth empowerment has been the main storage place, because they do primarily serve our older youth. But I think that we probably could organize that a little better and probably could just carve out actual storage space instead of, you know, looking to storage lockers, which take a little bit longer to access.
We also heard testimony with concerns about youth encountering lack of storage options where, when they are placed. Who's responsible for providing storage items such as bureaus, cabinets, and desks in the home?
If we are unable to have that at the homes with our resource parents, we do have a furniture contract here at the agency where items for storage can be purchased, if we know about it. So, I definitely did take that feedback, and anytime that is occurring, please elevate that, because the social worker does do a walkthrough, does, you know, inspect the home and ensure that the youth has what they need and that they're comfortable in the home. And I don't want storage to be a reason that a young person doesn't want to stay in a home. So, we are responsible for storage, but also recognize that, especially our homes in DC, sometimes are smaller. So, sometimes there are limitations. But again, if that is a concern, I gladly will take that elevation and work with the team to make sure that that is something that we are checking consistently.
Thank you. Now, um, one of the proposed changes to the bill's introduced version was to require CFSA to develop implementation procedures that specifically prioritize making access to luggage easier for youth agenda, I'm sorry, agency employees and community partners. One idea that you also mentioned today is allowing social workers to keep luggage in their cars. Another would be in their homes, so they have more flexibility to respond. So, it sounds like you're open to allowing social workers to keep luggage in their cars. What about homes?
Not opposed to any of it. I think any way to make it easier and to cut down on the time that the social worker would have to come to the agency to select luggage, especially in crisis occasions, I am not opposed to any of that.
Um, one of the concerns we've heard is luggage is not accessible enough, which is sometimes the reason it's not fully available when needed. So, who has access to luggage?
All social workers, family support workers, all managers, through their ID, their DC government-issued ID can access our Partners for Kids and Family headquarters location at all times, twenty-four hours a day.
That's great. Um, the, okay, so, and then one of the other questions I had, just back to the luggage donations for a second. You may get an increase of donated luggage due to the passage of this bill. Is the agency prepared to store even more luggage than you have now, or are you kind of at the max?
I will never turn away a donation. We will turn to our community partners and work with them. We have worked with the partners of DPR, Public Rec. We have worked with our local churches, with our family success centers, with our collaboratives to work through all of the donated items we have. We will never turn away a donation.
Okay. Um, one of the concerns, oh, sorry, got that. So, the bill requires the agency to prioritize easing the ability of youth agency employees and community partners to access luggage. I want to make sure our youth in Maryland are receiving the same benefits of this bill as youth in DC. Can you share who you think allowing NCCF and other Maryland partners to access luggage for youth in Maryland may work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, the social workers and the children in place in Maryland do have the same access level to the luggage, however. It does spark a conversation, probably needed to store some luggage at the NCCF location, making it more accessible to their team, and also available earlier than having to come down to the district to gain luggage.
Great. The bill also establishes a right of property in that the CFSA-provided luggage belongs to the youth and cannot be taken by the agency or a person with whom the youth is living. How do you envision CFSA protecting the youth's ability to keep their luggage?
I have not heard of any example where we have asked for luggage back, or anyone has tried to do it. But I would envision that we would make it clear through our process, through formalizing this process of, first of all, allowing voice and choice for them to select their luggage in the planned placement if there's time. But also, being very clear about this is now your property. You keep it, you take it, you take it with you wherever you go, and then for some reason, it is lost or misplaced along the way we're here for your next set.
Very good. Those are all the questions that I have for the agency today. So, thank you very much for your testimony. And thank you to all our public witnesses. This concludes today's hearing on B twenty-five-nine-five-two, the Luggage for All Youth in Foster Care Amendment Act of 2024, or Lisa's Law. For the public, if you'd like to submit written testimony for the record, please do so. For the public, if you'd like to submit written testimony for the record, please do so by five PM on Thursday, November fourteenth, by uploading your testimony to the council's hearing management system. The time is two thirty-seven PM, and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.